Like this for 15 years.
Yes, exactly.
Way down there.
All right, you're on air.
All right, good evening. I'd like to call this December 22nd, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Okay, approve the December 8th, 2022 Selectmen meeting minutes.
So moved.
I have one discussion piece on that.
Yes.
Yeah.
One piece on, on one of the items, it has me the, as both moving the motion and seconding it, which may be a problem if this is ever read. It's on, it's on item number four for the stop sign. And I don't know who seconded it, but I think I moved it.
I think that was Sheila.
Yeah, I think so.
But if maybe we would have, just to, we all get that.
That's just an amendment, so Sheila will just amend to.
That I will second.
No, I was going to say you'll just make a motion to accept the amended minutes.
Oh, I make a motion to accept the amended minutes.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor. Mike, thank you.
Gotcha.
Okay, number three, public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone to wish, who wishes to address the board this evening with any items that are not currently on the agenda. Do we have anyone in the audience? Anybody at home?
No answer.
Great, moving on. Number four, this is a long time in coming, but we're going to talk about an authorization of confirmatory supplemental agreement regarding joiner of beachfront owner to beach use agreement. Say that three times fast. Lori, do you wish to speak to it, or would you like me to call Amy to the.
Sure, I was just going to say that this is an item dating back to before the Gooseheart Beach litigation was settled. So this goes back to 2013 when we were in the beginning phases of it. And Ralph and I and Amy have been back and forth on this issue for the past two years. And I think we have come to resolution, but I'm going to turn it over to Amy and let her give you an overview.
Sure. Would you like me to get a mic?
We're the number two board, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, I don't know if it's on.
Oh, yeah.
We're not on.
Can you flick the switch on the mic? It's on top.
I might be able to do that.
You know the yellow chat?
Good evening, can you hear me?
There we go.
I'll say it again, happy holidays to the board.
Thank you.
All together. So just a little bit of background about this supplemental agreement. You may recall Gooseheart Beach case, the Almeida case, in 2012. There. Is that me? I'll stand.
No, no, don't stand away.
That wasn't.
That was me.
Oh, it was you? So the litigation started in 2009. I won't take you through all of that, but in 2012, we were, we had received.
Do we need to change your mic?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to change your mic?
We can try a wired mic. We thought we had all this work in to be tested. Now you can see that.
That's fine. Why don't you go over here next to Mike and speak in that mic?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm glad you're so flexible, Amy. Thank you.
Don't ask me to do yoga, I'll be okay.
I have to speak directly to that.
Is that, can you hear her now?
Okay.
Yeah, perfect.
Is that good?
Great.
All right, great. So by way of background, there was a point in time before we went to the actual trial before Justice Brennan, when we allowed beach use, beachfront owners to join the beach use agreement. And I won't go into what the beach use agreement did, other than you know that there is a beach use ordinance, and we now have had a management system in place for almost a decade now successfully. And after the trial was won and when we were on the way up to the law court, there was a period of time in 2013 when we allowed supplemental beachfront owners to join the beach use agreement for a limited period of time, because we were still in litigation and we were going up to the law court on appeal. And the board at that time decided that if there was a narrow window when you could join. And there were a handful of folks who did join during that time. And it is true that the Rosieris, actually the property was owned by Tiger Eleven LLC, which the Rosieris are the principals of, and Ralph can corroborate that, did approach the town, and there's a series of correspondence, there's no dispute, that the board at the time did vote to allow the Rosieris, I'll just refer to them as the Rosieris even though it was Tiger Eleven, to enter into the beach use agreement. A beach use agreement, a supplemental beach use agreement was prepared. And what we have record of is that the board authorized it, voted on it, and it was signed by the chair at the time Stewart Barr was, as of September of 2013. Then the records get a little bit fuzzy, and that's why this has taken a little bit of time to sort out, because we didn't, we, we did not have record of the Rosieris having countersign that beach use agreement in 2013. And there was some correspondence that had gone back and forth. I'm not sure when Ralph got involved, but it was, we now know that the Rosieris believe they signed the agreement, although the town didn't, didn't have record of having received it. And, but the town was operating under the assumption that they had not signed it. And so what happened was, we went forward, and as you know, in 2019, we got final, final confirmation by the law court that the town actually owned title to the beach in the areas in front of most beachfront owners, not at the very end, in front of Temerlin. And so when Ralph, on behalf of the Rosieris, approached the town and said, well, we think we have signed this, the information we had at the time, it wasn't clear that they had signed it. We now know, and we have an affidavit representing that they did sign it, but we did, did sign it at the time, in 2013. And it either was misplaced, in any event, it was not recorded at the time. So we have solved a mystery, and what this is, even though there's a long title, Ed, it's confirmatory, because it's like the other supplemental beach use agreements. If this had been properly done and recorded, it would have been recorded in 2013 along with all the other supplemental beach use agreements. I know there's been some concern raised about whether now that the town does have title to most of the beach by way of the law court decision, whether, whether the board would be interested in allowing beachfront owners to now join the beach use agreement. It's been my understanding that there's a reluctance to do so, understandably because the town does have title. In this case, I think because of the history and its uniqueness, that there shouldn't be the expectation by others that they can automatically sign the beach use agreement. Obviously, that's a policy decision, that's up to you. But I know the question has been raised about whether this might set some precedent, or whether there's an open season now to have others join the beach use agreement. And I think this is a unique enough situation where there's actual evidence that the town and the board at the time did authorize that this agreement be entered into. And it was really just a matter of the paperwork not having been appropriately filed in 2013. So that's a long way of saying, I think this confirmatory agreement does accomplish doing that. And I believe the Rosieris have, or Melissa Rosieri has signed on behalf of Tiger Eleven. And I can, if the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And I don't know if Mr. Austin would like to weigh in on anything.
I think I can use this one, yes. Good evening, Ralph Austin, representing the Rosieris and Tiger Eleven. The only thing I just wanted, that was a good recitation of the facts. The only thing I wanted to add to it was that you did find in the firm's files in your office, that letter of December 10 of 2013 from Brian Willing, that indicates that in fact, the signature page from the Rosieris was misplaced. And had sent, apparently had sent them another one. They don't recall getting that letter or that second signature page. But it sort of corroborates their position that they had in fact, in the fall of 2013, had signed the supplemental agreement.
Well, I made the motion in 2013, May of 2013, to approve it. And I remember it well, I do. I do remember it. And this brought it all back. And I, I think it's appropriate.
So do I have a motion to execute this and?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? So moved. Amy, do you have it so that we can sign it tonight and Ralph can take it away with him?
I believe the original, I believe Lori has the original.
Lori has it, okay. Let's do this right now.
That's great.
And then it's done. Because I also remember, and I've had conversations with Melissa as well, and I felt pretty bad about this, because this is one of the first things I did when it came on this board.
Okay, so we need probably a black pen.
Okay. Well, I was in the Army, I should know better.
Lori, would you like me to notarize, or is Yanina a notar, are you a notar?
I can notarize, or if you want to.
Oh, you can notarize.
If you want to.
That's great.
Somebody needs to, yeah, they need to take care of that.
Do you want to witness this?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, well, I'm sorry that it's taken so long. This was definitely an oversight somewhere, I don't know where, but we were, I believe we were transitioning through three town managers within that six to eight month period and, you know.
Does that work? Do you need a seal, or you're good?
Has to go to the register.
Perfect.
Yes.
Good.
Great, thank you, thank you, Amy.
All right, you're very welcome.
Thank you, Amy.
Good to see you.
Yes.
Yeah.
You too, happy holidays. Okay, moving on to number five. This will be an update from Megan McDervid of Woodward and Curran on the Pier Road Causeway Project.
Good night.
Good night.
Good evening, Mel. Thank you for having me. I'm excited tonight to share what we put together for the preliminary design for the reconstruction of the Pier Road Causeway. And I believe we have a presentation, we're going to get up there in a minute. Awesome. So if we want to go right to the first slide, we'll just kind of go over the agenda of the presentation. So let's skip to the next slide here. Thank you. So what we're going to do is I'm just going to very briefly remind everyone who's listening of the project background. And then we'll talk about the different components of the preliminary design, review the existing conditions, talk about the roadway profile and different elevation considerations we've had, look at the proposed roadway layout, show you guys what we have for our current estimated cost for the project, and then talk about some of the options at the kayak launch. So, and then if there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them at the end. So let's start and just kind of remind everyone about the background of this project. So if we go to the next slide. So the goal of this project is to elevate the Pier Road Causeway to improve its resiliency. The Pier Road Causeway is the only means of vehicle access onto Bickford Island. And right now, it overtops in floods and has to be closed during certain parts of year during larger storm events and in倾 tide events. And let's be honest, we might even see one tomorrow at that site. So what we want to do is try to find a way to elevate it so we can make that road more accessible during these conditions. We also want to protect the utilities that are under that road to make sure they're resilient and that these town infrastructure isn't damaged during a storm event. So what's the great thing about this project? It's that the town was able to obtain a very large grant to pay for all the construction of this project. Through the main infrastructure adaptation fund, the town was awarded a grant of about 2.6 million that will cover the construction funding of the project. That grant does require the project to be fully constructed by the year 2026, so we've got about three years to make this project happen. So if we go to the next slide, I just want to briefly review the existing conditions. So this is the view of the Pier Road Causeway today. One thing to know is the lowest point on the causeway is elevation 6.5. And I just want to take a minute and explain what elevation 6.5 is. When I say elevation 6.5, I am referencing the North American vertical datum. And what that is, it is an elevational datum that myself, engineers, surveyors, and contractors all use when we design and construct projects. Knowing we are in a coastal community, I know that a lot of you reference things differently, and you reference tides. And there's about a five-foot numerical difference between the North American vertical datum and tides. So when I say something is at 6.5 NVAD, I'm going to shorten it, so don't say the whole thing the whole time, that is the same thing as saying approximately an 11.5-foot tide, just so we all know. I've tried to put some references here to go from my datums to also tides, just to help understand where they are. So hopefully I can kind of keep clarifying that throughout the presentation. So what else is at the site right now? It has riprap side slopes, and there's a marsh on the eastern side. There are vehicle guardrails on both sides of the causeway, but there's no dedicated sidewalk or pedestrian access, even though this is walked by pedestrians pretty much on a daily basis. When we talk about utility on site, there is a sewer force main that runs right under the road in the causeway. There is a water main that runs actually under the marsh on the eastern side of the causeway. And while I don't have it listed there, you can clearly see it in the photo that there is overhead electrical on the western side of the causeway. However, I do want to note, those are actually located outside the town-owned right-of-way and on private property. And finally, as shown in the picture, there is the very beloved kayak launch also there on the site. So if we jump to the next slide, I want to talk about the profile of the existing roadway. So here, what we have is if we walk to the, to the causeway, cut a line right down the middle and stood, and we looked to the east. So the kayak launch is on the left side of the screen up there, and Bickford Island would be off to the right. And what you can see pretty much right in the center is that low point of the road at that elevation 6.5 NAVD, which again is about 11 and a half tide. As you can see, that is just above the highest annual tide elevation, which on the bottom is that dash dotted orange line. I apologize if the colors aren't coming in great, but it's the very bottom line. What this does show you is though, unfortunately, there's a large section of roadway that is below the other lines that are shown there. That pink line and that green dash line, those are what we call the 10-year stillwater elevation and the 50-year stillwater elevation. And that blue dashed line is the base flood elevation. So what do those mean? Well, we're going to go to the next slide here, and I'm going to try to explain what some of these elevational things mean. So on this chart here, we develop it as a way for us to evaluate what type of resiliency or what level of resiliency the current causeway is providing. And I'm going to walk through these, and I apologize, it's going to take a minute, but I think it's important that we understand these. So the first column there is our datum where we've identified different target elevations that we're going to look at. The second column there is the source where we have gotten all these elevations. So I just wanted to be know, all these elevations are coming from published sources that are very well-known and used by engineers and others all around for resiliency planning and design efforts. The third column is the NAVD elevation, so those are the vertical datums and elevations that we engineers use. And then on the final column, what I did is I tried to provide the equivalent tide elevation, just to help people understand where that water level would be. So for example, that very first row is the mean high water elevation. From an NAVD standpoint, that's elevation approximately four. That's what many fishermen refer to as a nine-foot tide, just so you can understand what that means. The next one, the highest annual tide, what is elevation 6.1 NAVD? That's equivalent to 11-foot tide. So just so we understand how those translate. Some of the other items on here, that where you see it says SWEL, that is stillwater. And what stillwater is, it is the elevation of the water during a storm event, not including wave run-up or wave action, okay? So if we have a storm event, it's what the estimated elevated water level would be. When you see things like 10-year and 50-year in front of it, that has to do with the reoccurrence interval of the storm. So for example, a 10-year, 10-year stillwater elevation of 7.44 means the elevation of the water during a storm event that has a chance of occurring once every 10 years, or said differently, a 10% chance occurring at any one year. So that's what those mean. Those stillwater elevations and those numbers refer to storm events.
Just so I can help clarify that, because I think it's important. So the, that is the amount of surge based on the strength of the storm above the astronomical tide, the high tide, correct?
No, these don't have to do with the tide. They have to do with, it's comparing the different storm and the elevation. So the reason you see the elevation of the 50-year storm is a little higher than the elevation of the 10-year storm, is because the 50-year storm is likely, it's less likely to happen, and therefore is more likely to be a more intense storm, increasing the atmospheric conditions and therefore increasing the water elevation.
And having more of a surge, but it's all on top of the high tide. That's at the high tide point. That's my.
Correct, yes, yes. The other one on there that has to do with storm events is the one that says FEMA BFE. So that is the base flood elevation as posted by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And this one, just to clarify, there is a slight difference. This is during what is called the 100-year storm event, or the 1% chance storm. The difference between the base flood elevation and the stillwater elevation is the base flood does include wave run-up. So I just want to make sure that's cleared. Everything that, where we, on that chart that says stillwater, doesn't include wave action, so no wave run-up, no wave setup. The base flood elevation as posted by FEMA, it's the only one they post that they do include the wave run-up action. So which is one of the reasons why you see an increased height in that elevation on that one. So again, just to refer, to confirm, the stillwater elevations, the base flood elevations, those elevations we have all have to do with a storm event. The couple other numbers you see on this chart, the plus 1.5 feet and the plus 3.9 feet, those have to do with projected sea level rise. And there was a document published in December of 2020, so about two years ago, by the Maine Climate Council, that really committed the state of Maine to prepare for about one and a half foot of sea level rise to the year 2050, and 3.9 feet of sea level rise to the year 2100. So because our stillwater elevations only have to do with storm events today, we've also included some rows in this column that add sea level projections on that. And that's why you see some even higher elevations on there. So given all that, the big thing to take away from this chart right here is that teal-blue line, that's the third line down, that is the current lowest elevation. line, that's the third line down, that is the current lowest elevation of the Pier Road Causeway. And based on that, you can see that currently the Pier Road Causeway does not really provide resiliency to many of the larger storm events or any of the projected sea level rise. So what are we proposing to raise the Pier Road elevation up to? So if we jump to the next slide, I have a new proposed roadway profile for you. And as you can see, and I apologize, I know it's tough to see on this screen, but we are elevating the road, and we are pushing the low spot actually towards Bickford Island a little bit, so it won't be completely center. But we're shifting it kind of to the screen right towards Bickford Island so that it better drains, so that the new low point in the road will be elevation 11. That is approximately 4.75 feet or 4 feet 9 inches on average, we're raising the road up. Now, if anyone needs a point of reference, I'm 5'4" on a good day, so you can assume that's about to my shoulder level. That's how much the road elevation is going to come up over existing conditions. I just want to make sure that's clear. Sometime, people hear elevation 11, they think we're going to fill 11 feet. That is not the case. It's 4 feet 9 inches on average of additional fill. I say on average because the road is not perfectly straight or level, and it won't be perfectly straight on level, so it's going to be a little bit different fills as we tie back in. But on average, that's what, it's going to come up. And the new lowest elevation on the site will be elevation 11. And what you can see, even though that chart is hard to see for the people in the room, what you can see is that now all of the road is above those 10-year, 50-year stillwater elevations and the 100-year flood elevation. And if we go to the next slide and see how that compares to our table of different resiliency elevations, you can see we've moved that line. That new orange line is the proposed lowest elevation of Pier Road. You can see it's moved down the page quite a bit, which means we've gained resiliency over some of these larger storm events, some of the sea level rise for the 2050 timeframe, and even the current base flood elevation. We haven't brought it up enough, though, to deal with the 2100 sea level rise in some of those bigger storms. But we tried to bring up as much as we could, given the conditions and given the budget constraints that we have, we've maximized it to this proposed elevation. So I'm going to now show you what the layout is of the site so we can jump to the next one. Because of course, you're wondering, how are you going to bring up the road by 4 feet 9 inches and not impact the adjacent resources, right? Well, the way we're going to do this is we're proposing to use these precast segmented blocks that will allow us to build vertical walls. I'm not sure many here are familiar with them because we used them on Ocean Ave, Ocean Ave, apologize. And the advantage of them is they allow us to keep the road really compact and keep our horizontal footprint compact, so we don't impact those natural resources too much. What we're also proposing here is, as shown in our preliminary design plan, is an 8-foot-wide concrete sidewalk. It would be raised with a granite curb that would be on the east. We have a vehicle guardrail that would be installed on the west side. And we would have what they call a combo vehicle pedestrian guardrail on the east side because of the pedestrian sidewalk. There is a picture of the one that was installed in Ocean Ave. Again, it would be a very similar concept there. And then also, right now, we're currently maintaining access to the kayak launch through granite stairs. That's what our design is currently showing. And that would only limit, allow hand-carry access by, you know, manpower boats down through the kayak launch. We have received some initial feedback, and I want to acknowledge we've received official, some initial feedback. One of that was that the 8-foot-wide concrete sidewalk seemed excessive, and we didn't need to go that wide. And we completely understand that. We can reduce that sidewalk. The minimum width we would need to make that sidewalk is 5 feet, and that is to meet ADA compliance. And with the grant funding, we must maintain or meet ADA standards. So we are happy, as we move forward, to advance our design and reduce that sidewalk to that minimum ADA standard. That will actually allow us to pull the retaining wall back and even further minimize our impacts to the natural resources. So I want to jump to the next slide here, which I believe is the cost estimate. So what is all this going to cost? So based on our preliminary design, we currently have the construction phase of the project to be estimated at about 1.8 million. We are recommend we carry a 10% design contingency because we are only at the preliminary design stage. And as we advance, there'll probably be some things we find. So we're carrying that about $180,000 for that. We're also recommending at this point to carry an owner's contingency of another 10% or another $180,000. This would carry all the way through construction. Hopefully, we don't need it, but it's there in case there are unforeseen conditions that come up when we get working on this project. That fourth line down is in-lu compensation fee and an allowance for that. That has to do with our permitting through DEP and whether we do have to pay for some of those impacts to the wetlands. We've, what we've carried here, we feel is a very comfortable allowance, and we think with our design, we'll actually be able to reduce that quite a bit. But we do have to acknowledge that that will be a fee carried on the project because of where we're constructing it. And the last two numbers there are the engineering fees associated with the design, permitting, and providing services during construction. Long story short, the total estimated project cost at this phase is just under 2.5 million, which I must say, to be at the preliminary design and to be within our available funding at this day and age is really great because I haven't had a lot of luck with that lately with some of the inflation costs in construction. So right now, we're right on target with where we need to be, which is great moving forward. So I know I've showed some renderings in the past of what this might look like, and I have a slightly updated one that I want to show you. So if you go to the next slide, just a quick reminder, here's the existing conditions. And then we flip to the next one. You can see, here's our retaining wall. You can see the combination vehicle pedestrian guardrail across the top of it, and we are showing the granite stairs as access to the kayak launch. Did hear some feedback at one of the previous meetings about not having all the grass and stuff, give us rocks. This is a coastal community, so we are showing some. We do acknowledge this is going to be aesthetically different than existing conditions, and we are happy to work with town to try to restore it as much as possible. And if putting some more rocks, staying within our impacts and stuff, you know, to try to reduce that face or exposed face of that concrete, we're happy to work with and find a happy medium there. One other piece of feedback that we have received, and I want to acknowledge, is you can kind of see there's currently a step or a jog in the top of the retaining wall, which also creates a step or a jog in the guardrail on top of it. That was our attempt to try to keep certain parts of the retaining wall as low as possible, but we did receive the feedback that it would probably look more aesthetically pleasing if it was all one continuous level. And so we acknowledge that, and we will implement that moving forward so that the wall will find a nice, even, perfect height, so that the wall is consistent and the guardrail is consistent moving forward. The final piece of feedback we heard is about restoring access to the kayak launch, and I want to jump to that as my final topic of discussion tonight. So if we go to the next slide. What our preliminary design shows is we implemented these granite stairs relatively wide so that we could provide access from the higher road down to the kayak launch. This would only allow hand-carry in, but it really minimizes the impact of the kayak launch, reduces impact to the natural resources. We were provided feedback that maintaining backup trailer access to the kayak launch is important, and we were asked to see if it was possible. So we did look at what that alternative might look like. So if we go to the next one, and I apologize, it's hard to see here, but we are able to maintain a, albeit a much skinnier ramp than what's currently there. So we would reduce the overall footprint or width of the ramp. But we are able to reconstruct the access ramp at, yes, it's steeper. It's 15% compared to what is currently about 5%, but we are able to tie something in that could still allow some vehicle trailer backing access to the site. So again, much, probably about half the width than what's currently out there when you combine some of the parking spaces available, so skinnier to get around the retaining wall and things like that. This does project into the wetlands a little bit, so more impacts than the granite stairs would have. But it's something that can be worked through with the DEP, and that's part of what that in-lu compensation fee would be covering, those minor impacts to that. And so, kind of in conclusion, that is my presentation of our preliminary design. I think what we are here today looking for from the select board is really directions to move forward with implementing permitting and final design of this project based on that preliminary design while incorporating some of the initial feedback that we've received, which again, to summarize, is the reduced width on the sidewalk, the uniform top of wall and guardrail, and then also trying to provide that trailer access to the kayak launch.
Is the width of the kayak area enough for a truck to get down, or you're talking just the trailer?
No, it's still wide enough for a truck to get down. Yes.
Can you tell me how wide that ramp would be?
I believe, and I apologize, I can follow up with the exact number, but I believe that's about 20 feet wide right now, as shown.
Yeah, just making sure.
What was the question asked?
What is the current width? I believe the current width is about 50% wider, but I don't know the exact.
But that's including the parking area.
Correct. That would include the parking.
That's not the ramp. The ramp is actually narrower than that, I do believe, between the two granite pieces that are there, which limits your access.
I don't think it's 20 feet.
Yeah, I don't think it is either.
It's not well-defined to begin with.
Yeah, but it's defined by granite blocks, so you can't.
Absolutely.
But you're saying this proposed ramp will be 20 feet wide?
Yeah, I would have to double-check. It's between 15 and 20 feet. I don't have the exact number. I apologize, I should have that with me.
So we're losing the parking places?
Right now, that's what we are showing would have to happen in order to maintain that connectivity.
And those aren't our decisions because we don't own that property. In fact, would you please come and speak to the microphone because I would like to hear what the, you know.
I just wanted to ask you how much longer your.
Elaine, can you go to the microphone so the folks at home can hear you?
Thank you for that presentation. I just wanted to know how much longer. You mentioned extending the ramp into the marsh. This is very important to us, that we do not want extension into the marsh. We do not subscribe to the idea that the DEP can then remediate this in another location.
But when you say extend into the marsh, it's, as I can picture that area, it has mud basically going down, the grass is on either side. And what it would be doing is covering that 20-foot section probably, if it's 20 wide, let's say that were true, then it looks like it's going from the marsh line probably about 20 feet into the, across that mud entrance to just make it solid so that a vehicle could get traction to get up. So that's what it's doing.
Right, John, so you're talking about putting new material on.
Richard, can you please come to the microphone? Sorry.
My name is Richard Perry. I live in Stonehaven. So what you're talking about, and what she hasn't said, is adding material out into the wetlands, mud, wetlands, that's not there right now, by at least 20 feet. We don't really even have exact measurements because I don't think that put in is 20 feet wide.
Yeah. Yeah. But I think that's true. That's what would be required in order to maintain the boat ramp. Yeah.
To have a boat ramp at that height.
Exactly.
Starting at that height.
No, exactly.
I agree. That's what would be required. But that requires also, if I'm wrong, please correct me, Army Corps and DEP permission, not just paying off.
No, no, indeed. What we're doing is we're also reclaiming a piece. So I think you'll see there's an element of offset that might make that relatively easy to get that approval.
Where are we reclaiming?
It would be on the side that, where the parking area is, that whole area would be able to become vegetation and what have you. And so you're restoring that section.
Even though we're moving out the width as well, John.
No, no, again, that's just the width of the ramp, the.
No, no, the width of the entire structure. So you're talking about the net effect on wetlands, I think is what you're saying. Well, we're going to gain because we're not going to fill where the parking area is currently, two spots. But in fact, by pushing the width out by 5 feet plus another 18 inches for the blocks, we're actually intruding on the flagged wetlands there. We're within the right-of-way, but we're intruding on wetlands.
That's already being covered by the riprap and everything else.
And has, you know, other biological material that grows up in between. You don't see it at this time of year. So yeah, I mean, you're right. It's trade-offs. I get it.
Yeah, yeah.
So actually, let me speak to what I was going to say. It was 2010, possibly even before, that we approached the town to donate this easement, John. And it was for recreational access, and it was at the time of Goust Rock's litigation where it was our notion that we would want to demonstrate that we could partner with the town to permit public access for recreational purposes in a partnership fashion, partnership. And so our intention was then and still remains to maintain public access on our property. Our access includes that gravel ramp that you've talked about, mostly for kayaks, but doesn't sometimes, usually in the shoulder season, allow small boats with kayaks, with trailers, excuse me. But because of the town's plan, and I want to make it clear that this is not Stonehaven's initiation, because there's a lot of misinformation out in the community, that somehow we're going to be responsible for the disappearance of the ramp if that's what happens. That is not what we want. But when we learned about the town's plan, which we heard about a week ago, to not only widen the whole thing but raise it substantially, that causes the ramp to disappear unless you have more wetland impact, impact as was described. So the engineers proposed a road elevation based on FEMA flood recommendations, as you heard, which are not just based on sea level rise, but they're also based on storm surge and wave action, underscore wave action. Because they depart, even in her chart, which I couldn't read, FEMA's numbers depart substantially from other recommendations, particularly the Maine Climate Council's recommendation for communities across Maine to try to achieve full resilience. And I'll mention that again, even though Megan did mention that. So we understand that the low point, the 6.5 feet above the mud at low tide, I think is what the translation of that was. Thank you. And FEMA has recommended 10.24, which represents a 1% chance, 1%, 1 out of 100, of equaling or exceeding that level in any one year by 2100, the next century. Correct? I think that's correct. So we are, you are, making a decision, they're designing a roadway based on a FEMA set of assumptions, including wave action, beyond 2050, where it's widely acknowledged that FEMA's numbers may fall short and where the science is simply not certain. And as someone who's a geologist, I'm sure you'd acknowledge that, John. The Maine Climate Council, as Megan referenced, recommends, recommends to you in 2020, that communities like ours commit to manage 1.5 feet of sea level rise by 2050 and 3.9 by 2100. And I think NOAA projections are similar. So with the road elevation.
You think that NOAA's projections are similar, or do you?
I believe they are.
You know they are.
But I have, I, you know, I can give you the citation on the Maine Climate Council, which is the state of Maine.
No, you made a statement that NOAA's.
I said I believe that NOAA's is similar, Mike.
Believe or no?
I haven't researched it that lately, so I'm not 100% sure.
I just want to understand the data that you're.
Well, here's what I know. I know the FEMA's numbers are based on the kinds of things that we just discussed. And I know that the Maine Climate Council has recommended something across the state of Maine for all communities of the numbers that I cited. Okay? That's what I know. So when we go to 4.9, I think is what Megan said, it's well above what the Maine Climate Council recommends, and that does not count the 6-inch height of the curving. And then is it 10 or 12 inches of a parapet above that? Megan?
We're still working on what the.
Okay, so, and I was told to look at Ocean Avenue, it's 10 inches there. Could be 12 here. So the net, what you see from the eastern view that she showed, you're looking at a structure that is, has a road at 4.9 at its lowest. at its lowest point, if I, I think I had that right. And then has another six, excuse me, 6 plus 10, 14 inches, another foot of what we see. And then on top of that is the barrier. We understand the need for the barrier, and there's no disagreement with that. But the issue of resilience also should take into account, besides the road height, the parapet height and the height that's conferred by the height of the sidewalk. So clearly, none of us want to intrude on the wetlands. I know they don't, we don't. We own them, so we're particularly sensitive to that. And my wife and others in Stonehaven are very sensitive to those issues. But when you design a road to maximize the dollars, a causeway to maximize what the grant has provided, you get something like 4.9, even though the science is uncertain beyond 2050 and suggests that we should be trying to achieve quite a bit less than 4.9. If we got less than 4.9, we could probably keep the ramp, which is really what we would like to see.
You could probably keep it. I guess that, that is, I think, probably, so you could keep it and not intrude into the wetlands, is what you're saying? Which you feel is true.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
That's what you believe is true.
That's what I was told was true by our engineers. Our engineers said, first of all, they said that the ramp currently is a very low pitch, which is true. It's almost flat because the road is low. They told us, and correct me if I'm wrong, Megan, that when we go, or Eric, I think, said it as well, when we go to 4.9, or we go to four, whatever the number was that they quoted us a week ago, this, the ramp in its current space would be too steep for safety and adequate use.
If it's not, if it did not extend.
Unless you make it more gradual.
10 to 20 feet into the, into the.
Not 10 to 20, 20.
But we'll see, we'll see what it is. I don't know.
When will we know? She's asking for, you know, design.
The next review.
Design guidance from you tonight.
Let's say it's 20, 20 feet in.
Say it's 20.
You're right, 20 feet, exactly, 20 feet.
And the 15 degree is a state recommendation as well.
For pitch?
A pitch, yeah. 15, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, we get that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So the only other way to solve this is not to start from such a high point.
I'm not sure of that, so I think we need to.
Well, I'm not sure of it either, but that's my, it seems logical, doesn't it?
So I think we should continue. My recommendation is we continue with the engineering and that we take a look at everything that we've talked about tonight and that we continue with the engineering. And let's separate both sets of facts and see.
I agree.
Yeah.
We would love to be a part of the process and.
We have been a part of the process.
Well, so this kind of discussion occurred a week ago.
Richard, you and I have had other discussions along the way. So this is not the first discussion we've had.
That's true.
And that was not the first discussion you've had regarding this because you and I have had those discussions.
That's correct. But I didn't have anything to go by. And what I was told so often was, no decision's been made.
It hadn't, nothing.
Well, not only was there no decision, there was no design, there was no numbers, there was really nothing. So now, you're right, Mike, now we have some, some design.
So what we're saying is, let's proceed.
Yeah.
And see.
And we're in favor of that. We simply want to remind the selectmen that this choice not only is for resilience, but we have to live with it, all of us, the whole community. We have to live with a big structure. Those of us who look at it from both sides of the harbor will have to live with something where we're not even sure that the height that's currently proposed is really necessary.
But that's, okay.
And one other thing I'd say is, besides the aesthetics of it, is that, you know, we may lose the kayak put-in in the process. And I don't think anybody in the community wants to see that happen, including us. So as we all approach this, and we're glad to be a part of it, we want to be a part of it, and not just at settings like this, which are very difficult for, I couldn't see, you know, the stuff that's projected on the screen. You guys have it in paper, but I haven't seen it that way. I think, you know, it's a matter of trade-offs. Do we really need to try to achieve something that will hit a number for 2100 that we're not even sure exists and lose public access in the interim for the next 75 years or so?
Lose it because we're not willing to extend that 20 feet. So let's be clear, we don't have to lose that public access.
Well, you're absolutely right. I mean, we could build anywhere in town under that logic, John, out into marsh, into sensitive areas to achieve public access. But we value our wetlands in this town. We value our coastal environment.
And so do I.
Well, then let's try to make sure we don't intrude on it anymore than we have to.
It's on a level of balance, too.
And it's private property as well. Let's keep that in mind as well.
That's true. And, you know, there were trade-offs in that easement as well. So it just wasn't, it's very generous and pleased to have it, but the town is plowing the streets, which is important. So that's a trade-off that was done in lieu of the easement, which is good.
I think that the intention of the easement was not to achieve plowing.
Oh, I'm sure it wasn't. I'm just saying that there is, there's pieces on both sides. But the.
I hear you.
Let me, let me just, where my thinking comes on this is, and I don't disagree with any of the numbers you have presented. The NOAA, one storm per every 100 years is based on 200 years of history that has been rapidly changing over the decades. And the storms that occurred 100 years ago, once every 100 years, are now occurring maybe twice in 100 years? Maybe three times in 100 years? Maybe four? Who knows where we're going with this? I'm being asked to look at this from the town perspective and to not try to get the rosiest scenario, like it's only going to come once in 100 years and it can be any stronger than it was 100 years ago, but rather try to look at it at what the science over the past 10 years has been telling us as to what's happening to climate.
I agree.
And we're about to be impacted tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
By just such an event.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
Once in a generation.
Unprecedented.
Yeah.
But these, so, we've got funding that we can look at, what is a responsible height to be able to build this road? And how long is, how many feet long ballpark is the road? 400 feet. So we're talking about a difference of two feet or four feet? So a two-foot difference over a 400-foot length visually. I'm looking at this, this to me is not.
I think it curls up, so the height is maintained.
Is not a huge difference in terms, we're talking a two-foot, over the whole piece of the road.
I don't think we're talking two feet, are we? Are we talking two feet, Mike?
Difference, difference.
Difference between what and what?
Between a two-foot, we have to raise the road. And that, I think we all agree. I think what we're discussing is, do we raise it two feet? Or do we raise it four feet?
Well, that could be what we're talking about. I heard Megan say 4.9.
4.9.
On average, it's, the fill is 4 foot 9 inches. So Megan, you got to go to the.
All right, what Megan just said is, on average, the fill is 4.9. Thank you for that. What would the average be if we raised it two feet, ballpark? Be 2, 2.6, all right? So, hurt me again, it's two feet, 3 inches difference is what we're talking about in terms of the height of the road. From a visual standpoint, I don't get that much difference. So the only difference I'm hearing is the boat ramp. And if, you know, again, to me, to be able to have the safety, you know, the, of being able to access lives on Bickford Island in any kind of storm, and in a storm that we know will become more frequent and more severe, I don't want to be sitting here and have somebody had a heart attack and the ambulance couldn't get there because I didn't want to compromise 20 feet of wetlands to put in a boat ramp. That would make me feel bad.
The access is not through the tidal cycle as it is.
I'm sorry?
The access is not through the tidal cycle as it is. So you would need deep water access. There's no deep water at that put-in. You're talking about several hours of access by kayaks. You're not talking about putting a boat in. You'd have to go way out to the end of the point through the mud to get it in. There might be other places in town that you could accomplish this much more effectively.
I may have misspoke, I'm sorry. I was talking about getting an ambulance from Pier Road across the causeway onto Bickford Island to help somebody that might have had a heart attack.
Okay, yeah.
I know, if the access was compromised because we only built it at two feet and we had a storm and the ambulance couldn't get there because we didn't go to four feet, that would be unfortunate. So we have the funds, we have the technology. It's a two-foot, six-inch difference in the overall side of the road. I just don't see not putting it to a responsible height and then work with the kayak ramp and go as little into the marsh as we have to in order to maintain the 15-degree slope and call it a win.
Well, again, we'd want to see the drawings for exactly what that would mean because we simply don't want to see these cars coming through our house. It almost, the elevation is quite dramatic when you look at it from.
Well, that's an important concern. And maybe we could ask to have a visual made from, and that'd be from your home, but from a height perspective in that distance. What would a, what would it look, what would the Perrys see when they were looking out at the harbor from two feet versus four feet? And put a car on there, too. Let's be sure we're clear.
It really impacts Doug and Wendy Mays, I would say, probably more than us.
Does it, okay, wherever the most severe viewpoint would be, in my mind, I'm looking at the height you're at. I find it hard to put it, but it might be. So let's be sure we can, we can really be put in here.
I find that hard to believe. I agree with John. Look, I have 1,000 cars a day in the summertime go by my house. Pardon?
So do we.
Okay, but they're right in my face. And I don't take, it's a fact of life. It's not like, it hasn't affected our view, it hasn't affected. It's a nuisance, but we're not guaranteed forever views where we live.
Mike, I'll just remind you, maybe it was 20 years ago when the head of the harbor had to be rebuilt. And aesthetics made a great deal to everybody in town. We didn't live right there like you do, but amend a lot to us as well as, because we walk along there. So the notion that aesthetics aren't important to everybody in town is not true. And I've heard from other people in town who don't necessarily share the same sentiment that you do, John. And I think we're talking about a matter of degree. We all understand that resilience is important, that we have to raise the road.
Right.
I mean, there's no disagreement in that. The question really is, how much do we need to, to try to achieve a reasonable, science-based, as best we understand the science? Because it's just not certain. We've learned that repeatedly, and that's how science is. We have a reasonable degree of certainty, and we have guidelines that have been given to us by the state of Maine. And what you're saying is you want to ignore that and choose to make it as big as possible because who knows what the future brings? And I agree with you, who does know what the future brings?
I think, I think it's a little unfair to say I'm ignoring it. I'm looking at what FEMA has said for the 1%, and I'm saying, I believe pretty confident it's going to be a heck of a lot more frequent than 1%.
And.
We've been seeing that over the past four years, for crying out.
But we also know that FEMA's assessment of velocity zones in Cape Porpoise Harbor was in error.
The run-up is an issue, how much that's going to be, I'll give you that.
So I mean, I think we're, what you're telling me is, you choose to look at the FEMA numbers, which are based on waves, which we don't really.
But that would only be, that would only be for the 1%. What I'm telling you is it's going to be a lot more frequent than the 1%.
I'm sure you're probably right.
And possibly more strong.
Unless we're better at.
Again, these numbers were built 10 years ago for the 1% base flood height elevation here. When you get the new maps coming out, I think you're going to find they'll be a bit higher. So this is, this is just where we are.
Well, hopefully, they do a better job with the new maps than they did with their velocity studies. Because those are seriously flawed.
So we do have someone in the audience.
Yes, I was just going to bring that up. We have somebody in the ether who would like to speak.
Stay put, stay put. No, stay up.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes, can you state your name, please?
Yes, this is Dick Smith calling. I live at number three, Stonehaven Drive, and I have a very keen interest in this entire discussion. And by the way, Mike Weston, your microphone is turned off. Every time you've spoken, you've been unmuted.
No, it's not.
Basically, I have a little to add on the discussion that you have talked to me making here. But I would like to point out that in the existing kayak ramp, there has been a granite separation installed such that cars can park on one side while active launching occurs on the other. And it's not unusual to find that there are two cars parked there while people are out enjoying their kayak ride. With the proposals that I am hearing for either the steps or the ramp, there is no accommodation for vehicles, and I don't propose that there be one at the ramp surface. But I would see that no matter what signage we put in place, that people will pull their cars onto the sidewalk. And then, and if they are daring enough to leave them there, which I would predict would occur because that happens all up and down Pier Road now, where cars are parked on the sidewalks in otherwise no-parking zones, then the pedestrians not only cannot access the sidewalk, they have to step out into an active travel lane. And I think that is more dangerous than we've ever had before. And, but I would propose that with the sidewalk, and I don't deny the attractiveness of the sidewalk to give people a safe place to walk, but I would propose that there be a physical barrier such that cars cannot just go over a birdstone to park two wheels onto that side.
No, it's an extra-high curb, is that the thought?
Extra-high curb or a low fence, so, you know, a foot and a half high fence. Something that is a physical barrier for unauthorized parking.
Yeah, yeah. A board with spikes.
There you go.
Yeah.
And, yeah, but.
It's a good thought.
Because I really think that it will be misused as a parking area in the absence, I mean, what we had was, was less parking space in the launch ramp than was, than the public would like to have seen. But, you know, it's what we had.
Right.
And I think with that totally eliminated, we are at very high risk of people parking on the sidewalk or partially there on the sidewalk. And also, you know, overflow, if they see a little bit of extra space, people who are otherwise enjoying the attributes of Bickford Island might choose to park there as well. And I, so I would propose that we have a physical barrier to that, with possibly the exception of adjacent to the ramp, rather than having the raised sidewalk, depress it for a length of 15 to 20 feet with a sign that allows for stopping a car to offload a kayak, but making it very clear that unattended parking is, you know, cars will be towed and crushed or something.
Yeah, exactly. It's going to need that. That'd be my fair, Dick, if you invite that. But I hear you, it could be an important thing to have.
Thank you very much, Dick.
I have one more.
Before I leave, our neighbor Doug May, neighbors Doug May and Wendy Wise are unable to join us tonight. They are out of state and couldn't participate by Zoom. But they gave me a letter, and I wonder if I might be permitted to read that into your record.
If it's not four pages long, they can.
And, well, I increased the print size so that I could read it.
Okay. I can appreciate that. Go ahead, Dick.
Okay, so, on behalf of Doug May and Wendy Wise, who reside at two, Stonehaven Drive, first, they would like to thank Woodward Inc. for their professional and thorough work. It's a difficult job balancing the requirements and the constraints of important projects in such an iconic location. They would also like to thank the Select Board for creating this forum, where we can come together and discuss our shared love of the community. And thirdly, they would like to thank whoever had the foresight to apply for this grant to protect the Kennebunk Port and Cape Orpuss's unobstructed access to Bickford Island from the effects of climate change. We are highly supportive of this effort. There are two points we would like the Board to consider, to ensure that we solve for resiliency, but don't inadvertently create safety and access problems. Point number one, access to the put-in and how it relates to the height of the road. There's been a lot of discussion about the height of the road and what that data should be, what data should be used to protect the future of sea level. While we could debate this for days, it won't help us act. The height that is being proposed is not being driven by any one sea level estimate, it's being driven by the budget allocated. If the budget were lower, the recommended road height would be lower. So, access consideration should also be a factor, since height is open to interpretation. The current proposal of 11 feet above mean-low compared to the 6'5" height that the road is today, appears that it will protect the road for a long time to come. However, if that is the new height, four-and-a-half feet above where it is today, access to the put-in will be negatively impacted. Today, many can easily launch their small watercrafts, but with a new proposed height, they will have to walk them down large granite stairs instead of pulling them off to unload and easily walking them into the water. The higher road height drives the need for repairs. A slightly lower road, one foot lower, for example, could still provide increased resiliency and maintain the put-in as it was originally intended. We would appreciate if the Select Board would consider this. Point number two, safe and appropriate usage of the causeway. Adding a sidewalk to allow for pedestrians to walk safely to Bickford Island is important. We have observed that many drivers are looking at the sunset or looking at the water and not paying attention to pedestrians on the road. As part of this project, we support a sidewalk for pedestrian traffic. We, like many in the community, walk this road frequently, but the current recommendation calls for an eight-foot-wide sidewalk, which we believe is dangerous. For context, an eight-foot side, wide sidewalk would be two-and-a-half feet wider than other sidewalks in Kennebunk Port. The well-established standard and required minimum would be five feet, five inches. We believe that the larger sidewalk will encourage those using the put-in to pull their cars and trucks up onto the curb, over the curb rather, effectively blocking the sidewalk and forcing pedestrians back out onto the road. Additionally, this large sidewalk would also encourage more photo ops and gatherings, changing the volume of people who would frequent the space, which is not a stated outcome of the resiliency project. Lastly, while a new wider sidewalk on the causeway would allow for more people to pass, the sidewalk ends there. There is no sidewalk on Stonehaven, excuse me, on Pier Road, on either end of the causeway. In summary, we love the village of Cape Orpuss and support this project. We believe that the height of the road should be adjusted to improve resiliency while also maintaining the access to the put-in, and we believe that a five-foot, five-inch sidewalk is standard and safest. Thank you for your time and consideration, and they thank me for expressing good thoughts.
Thank you, Dick.
So-
So, Richard, I'm going to let you close, and then I'm going to go down the board here.
I think we're all saying the same thing, except some of us are saying, let's be reasonable about what we're trying to achieve. We want better resiliency, as Doug said, and I think Dick said, and you have said, but we also want to maintain public access and public safety. Second, I think a sidewalk is a great idea, and actually frankly, if there can be a super-height curbing or something like that, that would prevent what is likely to be a parking spot. And, thirdly, and my last comment would be, if the sidewalk gets narrowed, does the put-in, the kayak ramp, have more length to-
A few inches, right? Because it is coming from that-
Well, it's more than a few, goes from eight feet, well, I mean, I'm assuming it lines up, right?
It's coming from an angle, though.
Do you see what I mean?
Pull it in, it wouldn't give a little longer throw, no.
Why not? Go short it, if you look at this.
No, it wouldn't shorten it.
I think that's what I'm saying. But anyway, so those are the kinds of considerations I hope you will make, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, so, we need to give direction to Megan, and we've had a lot of discussions evening, and I think there's some key points that we need to discuss, starting with the sidewalk.
Yeah, I'd like to start with the sidewalk.
What's the Board's feeling? Mike, what do you think?
Five, well, ADA.
Five feet?
Yeah.
No wire?
Well, I, how about zero? I mean, my, the point was raised, and it's absolutely correct, is that once you leave the bridge, there are no sidewalks, guys.
But everybody's walking that, you've got to have a sidewalk.
That bridge is, that bridge is dangerous. I walk that almost every day.
The reason it is more dangerous is because there is no shoulder, where there is the shoulders on the road, and that would make some sense. So, it's-
Well, yeah, but that bridge, that ship sailed a long time ago when, when we didn't take action to put a sidewalk in there when we could have done it. So, it can be done, it's just-
Well, I'm just trying to see what the, why, and I sense that it is more dangerous on the bridge, but, because there is no sidewalk on either side either. Once you get off the bridge, you're back in danger. So, you're, you're shortening the-
Well, I just agree with the five feet, that's all.
So, you want to see a sidewalk?
Absolutely.
Alan, what do you think about a sidewalk?
I think that we need the sidewalk, five feet.
Sheila?
Yeah.
Yeah, five feet. So, it sounds like a five-foot sidewalk. So, what do you think about the height, making it one height all the way across? Mike?
As opposed to the step?
As opposed to the step?
What, what's the minimum we're allowed to go up?
They're talking about the railing. Is that what you're talking about?
No, we're not talking about the road.
What's the minimum that the state requires us to?
The, the minimum the state requires you to bring the road up?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know, I don't know if the state has a minimum.
I don't think there is one.
That seems odd. They gave us $2.6 million, and they didn't, so if we raise it six inches and put the rest in our pocket?
So, listen.
No, it doesn't go in your pocket, as you know, it goes back to the state.
Listen to Lori, please.
So, this is a DOT grant. So, we have to get it approved by DOT. So, they are expecting us, since we're in design and engineering right now, to come back to them with something that is going to make sense and that they will sign off on it. So, they don't establish it because they're giving us the money to go through the process.
Oh, so there isn't a, an actual?
There's, I mean, there is a judgment call based on what we provide for evidence about whether or not we're making the road resilient and whether the money is going to be well-invested. And someone will make that decision at some point, wouldn't you say?
Yes, I agree with that.
So, to Sheila's point, if we were to-
Got up.
To Sheila's point, which I think is a fair one, if we were to ask our engineers to design a road that is resilient based on Maine Coastal Climate Council's recommendations as of 2020, we certainly can stand by that with DOT. And I wonder, I don't know, what the impact of that might be on a redesigned ramp. And I'd love to see what, how that looks. I'd love to not have those granite steps, too.
I still would like to follow the science, as we know, and, and I agree with John about, look, we've had 1978 and, and Patriot's Day storm, and, and now this one, whatever this turns out to be. So, we've had three storms, under-year storms since 19, if we have this one tomorrow, since 1978 with these bomb cyclone things. So, I just think we follow the science. I don't know, I don't know enough about the, the Maine Climate Council's recommendations or what, what they've got for science, but I agree with John. We need to plan for a lot more than a 1% happening. It's already happened since 1978. This will be the third time. So, I, I just think we need to do that. So-
What will be the third time, Mike?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow isn't, this is just normal. I mean, living on the ocean, can I tell you, tire of people, they, they want to throw this out and say, here's a big storm coming. If you watch Keith Carson on Channel 6 this week, he said, this is a big storm, but don't get out of control about it. Not you personally, but-
I'm not out of control about it, I'm just telling you.
But he's trying to explain to people, this is normal. We have weather. This is Maine in the middle of winter. Yeah, things have warmed up. My grandfather told me that they used to skate on the harbor when he was a kid. But my dad tells me that the storms aren't as big as people keep saying. They're big, but we've always had big storms.
We've had big storms, Ed, but I, I am clear, we are having stronger, more frequent storms in the past.
I disagree.
Well, okay, that, that-
I mean, I'm living on the ocean, I watch this more than you do.
We're not, we're here to discuss the, the plans.
Yeah, we're here, we're not-
So, I think that the problem is that, you know, there are folks here who think that we are building be, well beyond what is necessary. So, I guess it's our job tonight to decide what is necessary.
I can give you an example. Port Lobster, I own Port Lobster. Sonny Hutchins said, 25 years ago, it never flooded out. Now, it's flooding out three to four times a year. So, it is a problem, and that's what I'm worried about. And I happen to agree-
But the storms aren't flooding out Port Lobster.
Yes, they are.
No, sea level rise may be flooding out Port Lobster, but-
It's the surge on top of the sea level rise.
So, all I'm just saying is, I agree with Mike and John, that we should continue on the same path we're going on. Because I, just from, just from my own experience, when you walk into Port Lobster and you have two feet of water in there, there's a reason for that. And that, that's what bothers me the most. If it's affecting me, if it's affecting me, it's affecting other people. That's how I feel.
And we have the opportunity, sorry, we have the opportunity in a solid design to go to the four-foot height. It is recommended by some level of government science. I don't think we're being overly designed. The issue is, as I see it, do we take 20 feet of marshland to get the, the boat ramp? That's, that's, unless this view turns out to be much greater than I think it's going to be, and it might be. That's why I'm glad we're going to do this perspective view. But to me, it's a slam dunk. Why not build for the future the best way we can? And indeed, I'm not, I don't want to pave over marshland either, but we're talking about a 20-foot section extending into what is already being used as a, as a come-and-go area for, for boats. I, to me, it's worth the trade-off. There have to be trade-offs as we move into our, into the climate, into our changing climate. So, I'm for following the engineering.
I am, too.
Once we go above four feet of flood stage, you can't get there anyways, because the Cape Orpuss Square and the head of the cove are going to flood out.
You're absolutely right.
And they're next. That's why-
That's a discussion for another-
We're starting now, and they're next.
Yeah.
Need a big ramp for that?
Yeah.
Yep.
So-
You're absolutely right. I mean, one problem here is, nobody has enough money to fix the whole town overnight. You have to take it one step at a time, and this is our one step, our first step, and we want to get it right. We don't want to, we don't want to have it too big, we don't want to have it too small, but this is what the, the engineers are suggesting that we do, and I, I happen to believe them.
Yeah, me, too.
Well, it looks like Sheila and I are in the minority. So, given that, then, then I guess we're going to build to, I heard a lot of numbers. Is it 4.6? Was that the number we talked about?
I said 4.9.
4.9.
It's an average fill of four feet, nine inches, which is 4.75. But the, the important factor is the low point in the road would be elevation 11, which is higher than the 6.5 it currently is.
This is confusing.
It is very confusing.
Very much so.
Yes.
I get it.
What would it be if you could have?
The, put-in? See if I can give you an answer on that. I believe it's between three-and-a-half, four-feet increase at the kayak launch.
Three-and-a-half to four feet.
Yes.
So, it's going to be much steeper.
That's her shoulder, that's below her shoulders. I understand.
Okay, why don't we move on? We've-
Yeah, so we've talked about the sidewalk, we've talked about the road height, and refresh my memory.
The step-down.
Yes, did we already talk about that?
Not yet.
Okay, that was the last thing I was going to ask. The step-down. Mike, what do you think?
I think it should be level all the way across.
Yeah.
John?
I, I don't, I'm ambivalent, so I don't know.
Level.
Sheila?
Same.
Yeah, same. So, level, level it is. All right.
So, I have one other question.
Absolutely, Alan.
So, you were talking about railing, and you're going to put the railing on top of one-foot cement pad, is that correct?
The rail-
Bring up another foot.
So, the railing will go on top of the concrete retaining wall. Whether that has to, I apologize, this is going to sound confusing again. I know this was a thing that came up in Ocean Ave. Because the road is not flat, the projection of the wall above the sidewalk is going to vary, right? Because the slope, the wall is going to slope. So, what we will do is, we will set the top of the wall to the absolute minimum we have to, to match the high point in the sidewalk.
So, my question is, so, I guess I'm confused, because Richard said that you were, you were going to have another foot on top of the, on top of the wall going across, then you're going to set a guardrail or whatever, or fence on top of that. Is that correct?
We have to set the top of the wall so that it keeps the sidewalk intact, right? So, whatever the high point in the sidewalk is, that's where we can match that to the top of the wall. The, if we want to keep the wall level, this is why we had a jog in the wall previously, as this, as the road slopes to the low point, we can't install these walls at an angle, these, these precast blocks. They, they come level. So, the top of the wall will continue straight, and the reveal will get bigger as the road slopes, because the sidewalk's getting lower. And so, there'll be parts where there'll be very little reveal, and then there'll be parts where there will be a little bit larger reveal on the concrete, because the road is sloping, but the wall is staying level.
Okay. That's counting, that's taking into consideration where you're going to put the guardrail?
Correct.
Everybody's smoking.
I was wondering if we could get rid of that.
I'm not clear what the impact is of not doing the jog, not, not stepping down. What, if we keep it level, are there going to be some unintended visual impacts that, did the guardrail jog down as well?
Yes, the guardrail would have to jog with it.
When it went down?
Correct.
So, we're actually going to make it more obtrusive by keeping it level, because we're going to have to now, when I'm on the inside looking out, I'll see a certain height, but then I'll see that wall actually increase as I, as I go to where it would have dropped, right?
Correct.
If you're on the outside-
Pardon?
If you're on the outside, you will see more obstruction, if you will, than you will from the inside. In other words, you're going to see the number of blocks building up this wall, and they will be a higher barrier on the north side.
Yeah, the Bickford side.
No, the other side.
South side.
Well, not if it goes, yeah, it'll be higher if it jogged down as you get to Bickford.
Correct.
Right. But that's, really, that's what you would prefer? I mean, I think, was it?
No, I would, I, we, I think, I think this is a massive structure.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry, I think it's a massive structure overall. We're talking wider and way taller. Now, I'm hearing 4.9. That seems to be what you want to sign on to. And with that, there also is a parapet, a sidewalk, a parapet, and then a barrier.
Right.
So, the net, if you were in a boat out in the harbor, looking at this, it'd be pretty tall. And on the north side of it will be the highest point, correct, from outside?
The land side, yeah.
From the water side.
Water side. No, north, doesn't matter, it's all wonderful.
Okay, so I think we've talked this to death. You got one more thing there, Sheila?
No, I was just going to say, I think you know where, the direction you want, and we'll just wait for.
Well, I think, well, that was, that was my next point. I was just going to ask, Megan, are you clear as to what your instructions are from the board this evening?
I believe so. I believe we will proceed and continue to advance the design, provide a progress update. Here in the future, we will look at an ADA compliant sidewalk. I'm hearing a level top of the retaining wall, and we will continue to evaluate, trying to provide back-in access to the kayak while minimizing any impacts to the wetlands to the greatest extent practical.
Exactly. And you're going to go ahead and make a.
And we will work with some renderings for the residents of Stonehaven.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience, and thank you for your time.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, yes. Okay, I'm going to move on. Wiles District Road project update. Eric, I hope you are.
I don't think there's anybody here from the audience, so.
Yes, okay.
So I just, to give you a quick update on what was going on, just to recap, so we held an informational meeting. As we went forward with this project, we sent out notices to all the, to the, all the people along the Wiles District Road, had an informational meeting. Some of the feedback we got was to, to bring some of the neighborhoods around the Wiles District Road in for that information as well. So we sent out a survey after that first informational meeting. We got feedback from that meeting, basically splitting, basically people that wanted minimal widening to people that wanted some level of widening or, and/or sidewalk to be about 50/50, plus or minus. The, so we held the second informational meeting, shared that with the larger group that we sent the, the survey to. We had a good, a very good showing here, well over 100 people, I'd say. And then the third step that we had, we then held three neighborhood meetings, if you will. So we split the road into thirds, and Chris and I met with individual groups once an hour. We would move down the road and then meet with the mid, the mid-group and then the other end group. And so we had a reasonably good turnout, 10 to 15 people per location. Got the feedback, we were able to try, you know, the purpose of that was to try to get more granular, if people had a very specific question as to a specific location of the road. In the end, what we were, what we were proposing is to have a maximum, any maximum widening or paving of maximum of 18, of 28 feet. Be 14 feet from centerline. At the same time, we talked about the fact that sometimes it maybe doesn't make sense, we have cemeteries, things like that. Do we want to shift over a foot or two? So there may be a movement of that road a little bit. But also, if it did make sense where we have ledges and things like that, and we just didn't want to really ruin the features that are there, we will narrow down. And we want to say, we would just want to be reasonable about what kind of widening we would do. We didn't get a lot of, we got feedback, some people still concerned a little bit about the widening. But we also want to recognize that and just, the best way of putting it is, you know, if it makes sense, and I hate to say it that way, because it doesn't give somebody concrete, hey, this is what it looks like. But we will probably, you know, we would go out there, number one, address all the drainage, which is a big part of the work, that was also a concern from the residents. Address that and just do the widening where it makes sense. We, there was some agreement that we should place a sidewalk from the Ward Road that is the end towards Cape Orpus, and to the, across the new subdivision that's there, it's called Bow Sprit. The, to place a sidewalk to that location, only after that, then we would just be doing some kind of narrow widening throughout. So that is the quick update.
Great. Well, thank you. It certainly needs some work. I was down there the other day, it's getting a little rough in spots.
Yeah, yeah, we may have to do some patching.
And the telephone poles, a lot of them are very close.
Right. We would, we would likely stay inside those telephone poles, we wouldn't, because it doesn't make as much sense at that point. So we just certainly don't want to just pay for the sake of paving into a telephone pole.
Yep. Great, good. Well, thank, thank you, Eric. Okay, moving on to number seven, waste hauling permits. These are our standard, once a year, we have one for waste management.
Yeah, so did you all agree with Eric on Wiles District?
Yes. Yes. Waste management of Portland, and then we have another one from.
Casella.
From Casella. So do I have the board's approval to approve their waste hauling permits for?
So moved.
Circle.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you. Now I lost my agenda somewhere in here. I got it, thank you. Okay, number eight, street opening permit for South Main Street. Chris, there you are.
Good evening, everyone. So on December 6, we received a street opening request from Woods Excavating. They want to tie in a new water main for Woodland Drive. The extent of the work would be to excavate an eight-foot by 20-foot wide trench from the existing water main on South Main Street into the property. I'd just like to remind the board, we just recently paved that road. It was paved, I believe, on September 28th was the date of the paving. We did send out notice to the property owners, as well as the property owners on Woodland Drive, back on August 2nd. Our ordinance currently states that, you know, within, after recently repaving and reconstructing a road, it's under moratorium for five years, at which point, you know, no permission will issue for a street opening within that five years.
Were the people living there, these are not new people?
So we sent.
Right, but I mean, the people who are requesting, the owners who are requesting the opening, were they there in August? Or is this new ownership?
That I, I don't know, I would have to track that back.
But that wouldn't make a difference.
Come to the microphone, please.
Yes, I think we have somebody here who can answer some of these questions. I know this gentleman.
My name is Tom Shoning. I live in Kennybunk, and I'm here last minute on behalf of the applicant, BCD Woodland, and Duncan McDougall is usually the contractor here. But to answer your question, the current owner applicant purchased in March of 2022, but it's a vacant lot. So just to, like, were they there, you know?
Well, we want to know if they were aware of this, but under just real estate disclosure, the previous owners should have told them that they had received a letter stating.
Well, if they purchased in March, our records would have been for April 1st, and so we would have sent it to that property. Right.
Okay.
I understand, you know, this is the first I'm hearing that a notice was sent out August 2nd. I think my clients didn't, you know, weren't aware of that, and, you know, I know ignorance is no defense, but they just, they, you know, they weren't aware of that paving of South Main Street.
So you're saying this is a vacant lot?
Yes.
Was this certi, we send these out certified mail?
We don't send them certified mail. So they want to touch, they want to plug into the water, but it's still just a lot?
Yes, they, it's a vacant lot, and they're, been working with the town since about May to get, to split that lot into two and build the first of two dwelling homes at the end of Woodlawn Drive on their lot. So they want to run a water line, other underground utility lines, from, what's the name of this road, excuse me, South Main Street. So just, so they've been working with the town and the water district since May with plans to run this water line, and, you know, notice was sent out, you know, they didn't get the notice, and so they were quite surprised when they were going through this whole process to find that it had been paved in, I think, was it October or November?
Just recently.
Yeah, it was just paved, so they were like, oh my gosh, we were working with the town and the water district to make this, you know, spending thousands on engineering plans to run this water line, and they were like, oh God, to find out that it was paved.
Could you tell us who they were working with at the town?
I, I have the name of the, well, I think it was, was it, excuse me, were they working direct, was Duncan working with the town engineer? You're the town engineer, excuse me.
I'm the town engineer.
Okay. According to, like, you know, my summary of this, I'm just the attorney for the owner, but I haven't been involved in this particular development project, I just helped them with the purchase. But in my notes, they were dealing with the town engineer, and they were also dealing with, and forgive me if I don't have the name off the top of my head, and then they were also dealing with, I'm getting the guy's name at the, the water district. It was Chris Simeoni with the Kennybunk.
That's Chris Simeoni right there.
Excuse me, are you the, you're with Public Works or the, or the water district?
No, 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 the water.
Excuse me, I, sorry.
It's on the director with Public Works.
Okay.
Kennybunk, Kennybunk Port Wells Water District is a separate district from the town.
Okay, that's right. So that's a good clarification. According to story I'm gathered from my clients, they were working with the water district, you, talking about this plan, or the public.
We're not the water district.
Okay, excuse me.
So on Public Works.
Okay.
I'd say we table this till we get, till we get some more detail.
If I could just add one thing, so my clients did apply for that permit to access or tap into the road that was just paved, to access the water line, to run water lines along Woodlawn, Woodland Drive, and, excuse me, and they are happy to do, you know, they realize there's that five-year moratorium, but under the ordinance, I think there is a exception if, like, what it says is, you know, unless, you know, the necessity for making such insulation could not have been reasonably foreseen at such times the notice was given. So I think, you know.
But if they've been working on this since May, wouldn't they have had reasonable notice?
They, you, you'd think, but they just didn't know, and they were, they were shocked. So they've applied for, you know, the.
Or they ignored it when they.
They ignored it.
I don't, you know, they're, they're spending like $400,000 to run this public water line out to the end of Woodlawn, so they're really trying to do it right. So I think it really is a good faith surprise, and, and just to give you peace of mind about when you're considering whether to grant this application, they just built a house on Slack Tide Road, which is just off Route 9 Mills Road.
That's right behind.
Across from Newnans.
My former properties.
Yeah, it's a bunch of land back there, it's beautiful. They just built like a beautiful $2 million property back there, and they also had an apply for a application to dig into a road there within the moratorium period, and this was granted, and they've, I mean, they've followed those procedures to a T, and it should just give you peace of mind that even though they cut into it, there's like a, there's a lot of things they have to do after the fact to like repave that area, and they're, they're happy to do that.
It's actually never really actually the same after you do cut into the road.
It never is, it's a brand-new road. It's never the same.
And I don't think they cut into Route 9, I think they dug under it.
Well, anything, you know, you can work with the town engineers, anything they can do to try to, you know, dispel your concern about the road never being the same. I mean, they're willing to do it right. You know, they're really investing a lot in, in their lot, you know, the two houses they're building at the end of Woodlawn, and then it's really to put public water out there. And another reason why the public water is important is because they've worked with a couple different well drillers to evaluate their particular site, and they've had one well driller just say, no, he won't do it, and other well drillers are concerned about brackish water drilling wells out there. So that's part of the reason to, and without this application, they basically can't build a dwelling out there.
I think they need to come to us and explain to us why they didn't respond to the, to the letter, because we don't want to dig up a brand-new road.
Right.
For somebody who ignored, or seemingly, I will say seemingly ignored, a letter telling them that this was going on, so.
Yeah, just my, I assure you, they were surprised, and I really don't think they ignored it.
I bet they were.
If they missed it, did they not see it, was it, you know? But I don't think they intentionally ignored it, because they were working, you know, to try to get these, this permits and, and all the engineering proof, so. If you, I just jumped in, but thank you, if you have anything to add.
So we need more information?
We definitely need more information. I don't hear anybody on the board this evening willing to.
Jump in.
Yeah.
And Chris, just aside, how do you feel about digging into a new road, and is it ever the same?
So ultimately, what you're going to end up with, even, you know, state law does allow for the repair of a road under moratorium, and that is the guideline of, you know, after they base in the cut that they make, they return within a year, and they mill, what we call mill and fill, so they'll mill down an inch and a half, 25 feet in either direction of the cut, and then come back and then overlay the whole thing. You'll have a patch, that patch will be 50 feet long and as wide as the road is.
And we would, we would escrow the money to, are there a bond or something to be sure that got done?
It would be a bond, John.
Yeah. I, I had, because it's going to come up again, I had a question about the bond, too. And all it says is, it's, first, the bond thing says $2,000 bond, and then their application says $2,000 bond, and then the bonding company says going from 2,000 to 7,000.
Yes.
But there's no reference at all to what they got to do. All this is from the bonding company is a blank piece of paper with no conditions, no nothing. How would they know to go from 2,000 to $7,000 if they don't have any conditions, and there's none noted in the bond?
Sure, so when they applied for that, Mike, you know, originally they had come in, explained what they were going to do. They went based off their, their previous street opening permit and obtained a bond for the $2,000. So when they sent that to me, I said, well, that's not going to be enough, because if, if you fail to follow through with that, then the town's going to end up having to pave in that, that patch, you know, a year from the date of the cut. So that's why I had them up the bond amount to cover that work.
That's good, but I agree, good, but they haven't, and this bond, all it is, is a thing from an insurance company, not referencing any conditions whatsoever.
There's no statement of work.
No statement of work.
Sure.
So I would say until we come, somebody comes back to us, and we'll have another discussion with people who want to do the building, and they come back with a bond that has the conditions that you talked to them about, to go to $7,000.
Sure.
There's nothing in here that, I mean, I got your letter, it's, your letter's very clear on what you want, but it's not anywhere in the bond.
Sure.
So, anyway, I would suggest that we do that.
Well, barring any new information, you know how I feel about opening roads that have been.
Yeah, same here.
So.
So I would like to have whoever is the owner, or whoever is looking for this permit, number one, they got to update this, but I would like to have somebody come back and explain what happened. I mean, you've tried to do it, but you obviously don't have all of the information, so I think we need to have that.
Okay.
So we'll table it till we get more information? So are you going to table it till January 12th, or?
Well, until they come back to us. You know, it's, the ball's in their court, they have to get all their information together and be willing to be here. But.
Can I say? If I could just add one thing, I think if they come back next time with like a proposal that includes, you know, conditions that you might have and blanks to add more, I think that might be the most productive use of the next meeting. And, you know, just comment on one thing that was made about coming back a year later, repaving, you know, 50 feet by the width of the road, they do certainly intend on doing that, so, you know, that would be added in there.
They're not even planning on starting construction until.
Spring.
Spring, so there's time.
There's time.
There's always time, but things happen slowly, you know how it goes. Thank you for being here tonight, and thanks for giving us time.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, so number nine is authorized purchase of Invent Hyper Classic Mixers. That sounds like a Chris or an Eric thing there.
Yes, so for fiscal year '23, $50,000 in capital funding had been approved and was budgeted for, for the replacement of these mixers. The mixers currently are in excess of 20 years old. The mixers currently are in excess of 20 years old. We have started having more and more problems with these. Not to get into every little detail, but these mixers are submerged all the time in our aeration tanks. As a result, you know, it's just, it's a harsh environment for them. We did have to send one out a couple of years ago because we had a failure with it. We had some water intrusion into the gearbox. So we had to send that gearbox out and have it rebuilt. And it was somewhere around $8,000 at the time to have that rebuilt. We're looking to go to a design that's not submersible. So the gearbox and the motor is suspended above the water on a bridge. That will hopefully eliminate a lot of the issues that we've had with water getting into them. There are also a lot less maintenance. It's simply an annual gear oil change as opposed to pulling these periodically, changing the oil in them, you know, repacking them with grease. Current design, actually, the only thing that really keeps the water out of them is a grease packing, which is why we've been having failures with them. So unfortunately, like a lot of things that we deal with in wastewater, you know, there's only one regional distributor that we have in the Northeast for these and that's Aqua Solutions. And they submitted a price of $43,000 for those. That price includes the transport, transport insurance, associated spare parts and tools, two site visits for the startups, and testing and instructional services because that will, you know, the operators will have to be educated on the new equipment. So I'm recommending the purchase of the Hyper Classic Mixers through Aqua Solutions for a total price of $43,000. What's the board's wishes?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Okay. Don't go anywhere. Purchase wastewater pump. You guys are going to be tired of hearing from me.
You're costing a lot of money here.
So unfortunately, we just had a, the second of two waste pumps fail this past month. One we replaced last year, both at the same age. You know, these, it's another thing that lives in a harsh environment. These are what we used in the wasting processes, process at the plant. So this draws the excess sludge off the bottom of the clarifiers that we intend to waste, de-water, and later compost. So unfortunately, with our plant, you know, grit gets into these and over time they do wear out. This is more than likely what happened with this one. The rotor and the stator are worn out and it can't be rebuilt at this time. So we unfortunately, again, only have one distributor for this pump. It's a Nietzsche is the brand of the pump and it's available through Bow Hopkins. They gave us a price of $9,520 and it'll be $600 in freight for a total of $10,120.
How old was the pump, big ballpark?
Yeah, these pumps, I think.
But it's not a year. I thought I heard you say you replaced it a year ago and now they're still there.
We replaced one of them a year ago. Yeah, we replaced one of them a year ago.
Good, good. So there's no reasonable failure on this pump. I mean, it's time. You don't see.
Oh, yes, yeah, it is.
Is this in your budget?
So we would be paying for this out of our building maintenance line item. At this time, we do have the money to pay for this pump and, you know, fingers crossed, barring any other major failures, we should be okay to the end of the fiscal year.
So moved. Second.
In favor?
Okay.
All right.
We need those.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Okay, number 11. I believe Stephanie has some Forest Parks master plan update.
Yes, hello, everyone. Happy holidays to all of you.
Happy holidays.
So I'm here to just give you an update on our master plan process. Our survey is now live and it will be through the month of January. We're going to, we've done a big push already to make notice to people that we have it out there for them. We've done email blast through the town, through the rec department, social media. We have mailed a postcard. It was put in the mail today. So households should be receiving those next week. And then we'll do this all again in January after the holidays to remind people that it's out there. To date, we received over 100 people that have taken the survey.
So Stephanie, Dave has the website up on the.
Oh, wonderful, yes. So we are directing people to the website, which is where they can find the survey, not to the survey itself.
And if you scroll down a little bit, Dave, we should see where.
Yeah, if you scroll down a little bit, you will see where you can take the survey.
Keep going.
Right there.
I want to hear from you.
Yep.
And there it says, the button.
It's a good survey, actually. It was very, very easy, very, I found it inviting almost.
Yes, and from the survey, I did get the preliminary results of the ones that have taken the survey already and I'm happy to find that people are actually commenting, not just filling out the survey, but putting in some thoughts and things they would like to see, which is nice. So the school is going to help us push it out through their newsletter. The Conservation Trust is helping us, you know, push it out through their newsletters. I've asked the Chamber to do the same thing. And we're going to put up posters around town, library.
Library.
Yep, exactly, in our own buildings. Hopefully they're up already in our own buildings. But yeah, through the, you know, different bulletin boards around town, just to try and get everybody aware of it.
How many requests for pickleball courts have you got?
Lots.
Lots.
Boat ramps are important.
That's right. Public water access, yes. I have also met with the team from TJ D and A on Monday and we did site walkthroughs. So we actually went to all four parks, but concentrated on the Firefighters Park and Parsons Field. So they all have an idea now of what the parks are and will be able to get some work there. The month of January, we are going to concentrate on scheduling some stakeholder meetings with different groups around town. Public Safety, we're going to, you know, talk to. Public Works, we're going to talk to, as well as the School District, the Little League. Tommy McNamara Foundation, you know, has shown interest in this. And so we will be talking to all these different groups and getting input from them as well. Once that happens, the TJ D and A team will get to work and start doing some preliminary drawings, preliminary work on that. Because at the end of January, I forgot to mention this, we will have all the results from the survey as well. And then by mid-February, they will be getting ready for the public meeting. And so we'll hold that public meeting end of February to get public comment from people as well with the preliminary kind of drawings and things done. If we need to hold more stakeholder meetings at that point, we will again do those. But we're hoping by the end of March, they'll start working on like a final concept design for the two parks that we are looking to concentrate on. They'll be putting the class together for, you know, the different ideas of things we want to see in those parks. And then they'll have a presentation, a final presentation for you by the end of May.
Okay.
Yes.
Well done.
Very good.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, but maybe at the Fireman's Park, this will be my request.
Yeah.
Put in a little playground for the youngsters.
Yep.
Around the fire truck.
Around the fire truck.
Yes, we don't want to get rid of that for sure. Thank you.
All right. Okay, number 12. I believe this is Jay. Authorized purchase of Ford F-350 for fire department brush truck.
Yes, good evening. So in the current budget, we had money in the capital to do this. So February, put a bid out, got zero response even with a truck for highway. Did it again in November, another big goose egg. So I followed up with the places I had sent them and a lot of what I got back was, well, we really can't, we really, the pricing is going so crazy and changing so much, we can't give you a price for that long. So in talking with Lori, I said, what if I went to the local ones? So four dealers between York and Portland and said, can you hold me a price? This was last, give me the price last Thursday so I could get it into your packets and hold it to me, for me until tomorrow. So we, I did do that. I did, and the nice thing was is I was able to get pricing from all four where, you know, I figured I was striking out with just sending them a bid. But so looking at this, it's a very similar truck. I brought the window sticker with me from the one I bought in 2019. And that's what they based these, this pricing on. And I'm asking you to approve a range for Row Ford. Row Ford was the only one that talked about any type of government program, but I've also heard that over the year, the last year or so, they've suspended them. So I'm not really sure, but he's, he gave us that option. If he can get it in there, it saves us about $4,000. And then if not, if we had to order it, he's still basically the low bid. And so the top of the range is if we, if I just had to order it and we didn't get into any government program.
Well done, Jay.
What's the board's wishes?
I make a motion that will approve the purchase of a replacement for brush truck 35 in the range that Jay has set between 45,000 and $50,000.
Second.
Okay, have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Good luck, Jay.
Thank you very much.
Good effort, too.
Yes. Okay, number 13. Accept donations for the nurses' general account, for the general nurses' account. We have a $50 anonymous donation. And we have a $100 donation from Janet Henry and Vernon Moore towards the general nurses' account.
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor? Accepted with much appreciation. And we have some for the fuel, emergency fuel fund. We have $100 from David Kling and Catherine Saunders towards the fuel fund and 360 from the Church on the Cape towards the fuel fund.
So moved. Gratefully seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Motion passes. Other business, Mike?
We do that before we go into executive session or?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. I have none.
John?
I have none.
Alan?
No.
None.
Sheila? Lori?
None.
I'd just like to say Merry Christmas to everybody out there, Happy Hanukkah, whatever other holidays you may celebrate. 'Tis the season. And number 16, approved December 2022, 2022, say that fast, treasurer's warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Now we will be going into executive session per MRSA Section 1, subsection 405-6A for discussion regarding personal compensation. And we may or may not be taking action this evening.
You need a motion.
I need, I'm sorry, I need a motion.
Second.
All in favor? All right, to the leather lounge.